Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this February 6, 2018. We have a full quorum of seven planning commissioners. We welcome the public who is here. Hope you find this meeting enjoyable. Our condolences to Patriot fans and congratulations to Eagles fans in the audience. The first item of business we have tonight is the approval of minutes from our January 16, 2018 meeting. If anyone would like to take action on that item. Commissioner Quinney?
I move to approve the minutes as contained in the packet.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Is there any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, which brings us to our first public hearing this evening. Synergy Dance Academy, 6102 West, 9860 South, conditional use permit for personal instruction service in an M1 zone. Synergy Dance Academy, Shannon Mortensen is the applicant. Would you please come forward and present your application?
I'm Shannon Mortensen, and this is Megan Honey, and we are applying for conditional use permit for Synergy Dance Academy. Synergy Dance Academy is a dance school for students in elementary school, middle school, and in high school. Our business runs opposite hours as the school, so we start classes at about 4:30 p.m. and wrap up at about 9:30 p.m., which runs opposite the hours of most other businesses in the area that operate on your more traditional nine to five. So, the impact that we have on our neighbors as far as traffic goes is minimal since we work those opposite hours. We're not very noisy. We don't require anything outside the building as far as storage. We are willing to make any changes to make it safer as far as parking goes, drop off, and loading zones, adding mirrors, anything else that you guys think that we need to do to make it a safe place for our students.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
That's all. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Mortensen? Great. We'll leave some time for you if there's anything else that comes up after the public hearing that you'd like to address.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Forsyth, you have this for the city?
Yes, thank you Chairman. So, as the applicant just pointed out, they're planning on operating a dance studio just kind of in the area between Prosperity Road and the Mountview Corridor. So, per city code, dance studios are defined as what's called a personal instruction service, which is essentially anything offering classes. So, those types of uses are allowed only in the M1 zones as a conditional use permit. So, as you can see here on the zoning map, most of that area is zoned M1s, which is a light industrial zone. So, most of the businesses in this area are going to be warehouse, outdoor storage, construction yards, things like that. So, you can kind of see here as far as traffic patterns go, it's pretty good traffic flow based on the connectivity and kind of circular pattern of how that road is set up. So, we think that'll help a lot with the traffic flow, and most of that should be pretty smooth. So, as far as the lot goes, the dance studio will be located on a half acre lot inside a two-story office/warehouse building that was kind of designed with that in mind. Now, the main floor contains about 4,000 square feet. That's where most of the dance classes will be held, and then the upstairs is about 1,200 square feet. So, that's mostly the office space. So, most of the main impacts that staff was able to find and see as a result of this use was drop off configurations and parking. So, as you can kind of see here from the picture, their parking spaces are located right in front of the building, and then the drive aisle is just behind that. So, we took a look at that and felt that it looked a little bit unsafe with, especially if cars were pulling up against that southern curb, and then the kids were just kind of crossing off or crossing around the cars and going through there. So, we didn't want to have, you know, an impatient driver, you know, try to cut through and then end up hitting someone. So, we added a condition of approval to basically remove those parking stalls and restripe them on the south end of the parking lot, and then just shift that drive aisle to the north so that it's adjacent to the building, and the parents can just drop their kids off right at the entrance. So, these are, as you can kind of see there, just at the front there, that's kind of what the reconfigured parking lot would look like. Then, we also looked at the parking as well. So, dance studios require one space for every 200 square feet of floor area. So, with this building, that brings the required parking to 27 spaces. The site right now only has about 23. So, to come into compliance with that, the applicant has agreed to work with the property owner on getting the northeast corner of the lot. You can't really see it right now, but it's, right now, it's just a dirt patch. So, they're going to have that paved and add six spaces to that area. So, other than that, the only other issue that we were able to see is there's a wall just over on the west side of the building. You can kind of see it there. So, with that parking lot being in the rear of the building, and we were just a little worried if clients were running down that drive aisle there to get to the front entrance, we wanted to make sure that was safe. So, we just recommended as a condition of approval that they put in some sort of safety feature to mitigate that, either with a mirror or maybe some striping. We've been in talks with the applicant about some future parallel parking on the west side of that lot. And so, as part of that, they were thinking of actually removing that wall entirely. So, if they were to do that, that would eliminate that obstruction. So, based on these findings and those explained further in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for Synergy Dance Academy located at 6102 West, 9860 South, with the conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Are there any questions for city staff? Seeing none, we'll open this up to the public. It's been noticed as a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please feel free to come forward at this And we'll close the public comments section and bring it back to deliberation with the planning commission. Commissioner Green?
So, as we talked about in the pre-meeting, I'm going to ask this question now of city staff. Synergy Academy has more than one building on this site, correct?
So, this site just consists of the one building. Now, so, this is, this building is one of three. So, there, so, in other words, this building and property is one of three. So, this is one. The one next door is the other, and then there's a building across the street that has three lease spaces that are, that'll be occupied by the applicant.
Any other comments? Commissioner Luthy?
As we discussed in the pre-meeting, I think that at this time, it's probably best if we table this discussion until we have the applications for the other two sites so that we can treat it more as a campus and not just as an individual site, to make sure that it works well. So, I guess I'm proposing that we table this discussion and bring it to probably the first, no later than the first one in March, the planning commission meeting in March.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
A motion by Commissioner Luthy and a second by Commissioner Green. Discussion to the motion, please. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, if I could ask Commissioner Luthy, and moving this to March for our first meeting in March, could we add the condition that they have made all applications and are ready to go forward with their other two facilities? If that would be agreeable to you.
Yes, that's what I was intending, is that all of them would be submitted at one time and be prepared for that March, whatever the first planning commission meeting in March is. Yeah, that's what I had intended.
Thank you. Commissioner Green, are you amenable to that friendly amendment?
Yes, I would like to also ask for an amendment that would ask the city fire department to look at specific occupancy rates for the buildings and have that as available data for us when we do the conditional use permit in a month.
Thank you. And back to you, Commissioner Luthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that would be great.
Great. So, we have an amended motion.
And since I seconded it, I'll go again with my second.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any further discussion to the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Bringing us to item number three on the agenda, Industrial Floroplastics Incorporated, 9328 South, Holly Park Road, conditional use permit for chemical storage and manufacturing and the drinking water source protection overlay in an M1 zone. Modern Construction, Debbie Hutchins, is the applicant. Is she present this evening?
I am. But Bob Chavez is the, is the owner.
Okay, so Bob Chavez will be presenting the application. Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
So, what we're basically trying to do is build a storage shed behind our shop. We have a lot of racks. We do, at the shop, we do Teflon moldings and coatings, and we use racks to hold parts as they go into the oven, and we have no place to store them right now. We're just storing them outside. So, we're looking for a big storage shed out back.
Very good. Any questions? Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have a question. Have you had any incidents at all since you guys have owned this property with any kind of concern of leakage or anything else?
No, and I seen that. It makes it sound like we store chemicals. We're not a chemical storage company or anything by any means. We do have some chemicals. We have a lot of Teflon resin, which is a plastic resin, doesn't burn or anything, but we do have quite a bit of that, and we have some coatings.
But you've not had any incidences where that, is that, okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
And we're not storing any of that in that building. We're just using it to store metal racks.
Any other questions? All right. We'll save some time for you if anything comes up after the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Mr. Forsyth, oh, sorry, on his behalf, does anybody want to present, or should we call Mr. Forsyth?
No, I'll take a shot.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
And so, this is where Industrial Floroplastics is located, off of Holly Park Road. You can see the different well zones. The wellhead is actually kind of kitty corner across the street, and then it, as Mark mentioned in the staff report and in the pre-meeting, it's right on the very edge of the 250-day recharge area, but it's still within a three-year recharge area, hence the need for a source, drinking water source protection conditional use permit. The applicant has been cooperative, and with the conditions of approval, staff feels that this can safely, this conditional use permit can be safely approved without any incident to the, to the drinking water area. So, we recommend approval.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Forsyth, anything else to add?
Uh, no, not this one.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff from the planning commission? All right. We'll open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please feel free to come forward. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Quinney?
Since it doesn't look like we have much in the way of comments, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for Industrial Floroplastics to expand a chemical manufacturing use within the drinking water source protection overlay on property located at 9328 South Holly Park Road, subject to the conditions of approval listed on page two in our staff packet.
Commissioner Luthy?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Do we have any discussion for that motion? Seeing none, we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan. Our last item this evening is a text amendment to amend Section 13-8-23 annual cap on multifamily development applications, adding an exception to allow twin homes on certain vacant R2 properties. With citywide applicability, the city of West Jordan is the applicant, and Ray McCandless and Duncan Murray will be presenting the application. You can rock paper scissors.
All right, I guess I'll do it, and if I miss something, Ray, I'll chime in and fill in what I missed.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
So, this, as everybody knows, is a recommended or proposed amendment to our city code. It's a text amendment. It was initiated by the city council. So, they have a procedure where if it's on the agenda and in one of their meetings, if by at least four votes out of seven, they recommend it to you, then it can be initiated in that way. So, this is, instead of it being staff-initiated or initiated in some other way, it's initiated by the council itself. They're, they would like to know what your recommendation is after hearing from the public in the public hearing, and then also, of course, they'll hold a public hearing probably on February 28th on the same issue. Of course, the cap and grade ordinance deals with multifamily development. It's, the original cap and grade ordinance was passed back on October 22nd of 2014. It basically established, as you know, a ratio of 77% single-family dwellings to 23% multifamily dwellings, kind of a maximum percentage of multifamily being 23%. There are, however, certain exceptions or exemptions that have been built in, which do not apply to that regular 23% maximum. One of those exceptions is if someone's near a transit overlay station in a specialized district, basically next to a track station. A second exception or exemption is for senior housing, 55 and older age. A third exemption is multifamily housing for disabled persons. A fourth one is low and moderate income housing owned by a nonprofit or housing authority. The fifth one you've seen a fair amount in the last year or two is for a master-planned community of at least 75 acres that meets certain other criteria. And then, what's proposed tonight for your consideration is basically a sixth potential exemption, which would be for twin homes on vacant parcels in R2 zones as long as certain criteria are met. And basically, what the criteria is, is if someone, as of the date the cap and grade was passed on October 22nd, 2014, if their property was vacant and in an R2 zone at that time, and has continuously been since then until now, a vacant parcel in a R2 zone, and as long as the property's properly subdivided and gone through a designer review committee process and so forth, and as long as that building permit is pulled within two years, then that property could be used for twin homes. Twin homes being those that are separately divided with a zero lot line. So, if it's one parcel divided into two lots with the lot line going right down the middle of the building with one unit being half of that building and the lot surrounding it, and the second one being a, the other half of the building with the other lots surrounding that one. Of course, this ordinance does allow, one, if it's, if it's currently one parcel, they could subdivide it and comply with that after the fact. The zoning and the vacant requirements have to be pre-existing. The other requirements, somebody can comply with after the fact and finish the subdivision process, site planning, and building permit subsequent to that. So, but basically, that's the proposal that's consistent with the general nature of what the council wanted you to consider. You, of course, as a recommending body, you can, after hearing from the public and their thoughts, you can exercise your discretion according to the ordinance by either sending it as is, recommending approval to the council, sending it as is, recommending denial by the council, send it with amendments, recommending approval, or anything similar to that. So, those are your three main options. So, you are, of course, able to recommend changes to what's proposed and in front of you. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anything else from city staff? Okay, great. Any questions from planning commission to city staff? Commissioner Green?
So, do we have, I didn't go back into city, do we actually have a definition of twin homes in the city code someplace?
Yes. Yeah, there's a definition right in the Title 13, yes.
And I guess my other question was on, on paragraph five, with, where it talks about completed application by February 28, 2020. I'm assuming that we're looking at that as some sort of sunset clause?
Yeah, that's exactly what that is. And the reason it's, for that date is that the assumption that the city council will hear this on February 28th, later this month, 2018, two years later being February 28th, 2020. Effectively, yeah, it's a sunset clause. So, if somebody that otherwise complies with this ordinance does not pull their building permit within those two years, then they would not be able to pull a building permit. Now, there is kind of a built-in extension so that if somebody, say, pulled their building permit on February 27th, 2020, that, and timely pursued that building permit and didn't, you know, complete it till six months later, it would still comply with the ordinance. They just have to pull the building permit, pay all the fees, and start the process and timely complete it. So...
Because the follow-up to that question is, and I, I appreciate that, what I'm wondering is, is we hit February 2020, and all of this is done, do we have a mechanism, or can we amend this so that this section automatically just drops out? So, what I'm saying is, is that then, to make sure that this is a clean process, that the sunset, the sunset approval just says, effective, whatever it is, after February 8, 2020, whatever that may be, that this ordinance just completely goes out of, out of the city code so that it's not there and that it's clean, so that when we amend it now, it's clean. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we could add a full-fledged sunset provision that it automatically disappears without having to formally amend it out later. Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just wondering, do these homes have to meet all of our residential requirements such as building materials, that type of thing?
Yes. Good question. And that's under, you got the five listed subpar paragraphs there. It's the number four, where it says a site plan has to be reviewed and approved by the designer review committee and planning commission prior to the issuance of building permits. So, basically, it's a little mini site plan to make sure they meet all of those types of building requirements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public for the public hearing, commencing with Mr. Michael Park. Please come forward, sir. Thanks for sharing your comments this evening.
I'm one, I'm one of six or more people that have a lot like this, and I had my lot rezoned, when they put the twin homes around me, I had my lot rezoned and then had it developed, and I've just been using it as a garden for 30 years. And now that I don't have any water, it's time to, you know, build something on it, you know, a twin home. And so, that's the purpose of, you know, me, because I came in, we came in to see if we could get a building permit and found that where there was a cap and grade, and I thought, well, you know, I'd done all my due diligence 30 years ago. So, not knowing that now I'm stuck and can't do anything, then, you know, and so, I guess that's why we're here, is because now I'm ready to retire and move on, and, and so, yeah.
Great. Thank you for sharing.
Any questions?
Not at this point. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section, bringing it back to the commission for comments, discussion, deliberation, leading to a possible motion. I guess to kick it off, I would just mention, it's not necessarily a full consideration with simply this application. As I previously mentioned, it's understandable with any rule, there are bona fide exceptions, and since we're recommending to the city council, I'd just like to have the comment made that when we open it up to too many exceptions, it becomes more and more difficult to get to that 77-23 ratio, especially given the rate of building permits that we have on single-family homes where we already know it's going to be decades out before we could actually reach that without any exceptions. So, again, not saying that I am in disagreement with the proposed application. I just think that that should be a comment at the forefront of any discussion regarding creating exceptions. Just my two cents. Commissioner Green?
So, as we talked about in the pre-meeting, this only affects a very few number of properties, correct?
Correct, yeah. Probably, you know, I can only, he said six, there might be six, but I believe a lot of those already have a structure on it so they wouldn't meet the exception. His lot does. There's another lot, like I said, that's owned by Utah Power, and the other R2 one that may be a possibility, already has a building on it, and so that doesn't meet the exception. So, it's only for vacant parcels. Very, very, very few.
So, my comment was going to be is, I agree with you that we don't want to have a lot of additional exceptions, but from, from a perspective of a landowner who, you know, the property was zoned R2, whatever it was, a long time ago, and now he's, he's stuck because we won't, we don't allow an approval. It's almost like, and I hate to use the term "it was a taking," but it almost was, because if we don't let him build on that property and in a properly zoned area, I think it's, it does us a disservice. So, given the number of, I mean, I agree with you, but given that the maximum number that we're talking about, even if it's six, we're only talking about 12, 12 units in the city, I don't think that's, you know, 12, 12 town, 12 town homes is not going to, going to kill us, and it might buy us some brownie points with the legislature when they start looking at moderate housing in certain areas that I know they are taking a look at. So, I agree with you 100%, but on this one, I think I, I agree with the zoning change.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Yeah, I just want clarification on the dwelling unit. That means somebody had to have been living in there, or it had to be constituted as a house. It couldn't mean that there's just a shed on there, or...
Yeah, a few, well, I guess it doesn't have all the language.
It just, all it says is dwelling units, so that's what I want clarification on.
Right. So, all we're focused on is, because we have the definition right in there, that vacant is no dwelling units constructed since the October 22nd, 2014. Yeah, so if somebody... if somebody has a shed or an agricultural, uh, structure or anything else that doesn't actually have people living in it, then that does not disqualify them. It's only if they've had, uh, you know, a dwelling unit, a house, or some, you know, with somebody living in it during that time period, then it would disqualify them.
So if they had a house on half, on part of it, but not the other, it would be disqualified?
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other deliberation or motion?
And one thing I want to add is that the prohib, prohibition of twin homes in already zoned, uh, properties is, I think always, since the cap and grade went into place, always been looked at as an unintended consequence, but, um, it is following the ordinance by not allowing it. Um, I think the councils, uh, their main focus when they passed the cap and grade a few years back was on the large apartment complexes and large multifamily. And so I think this just corrects a very, very small, uh, because ordinances always have a little bit of overreach, and, and in my estimation, uh, this reached to an area that it really didn't need to correct, and so.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Well, I, I have to tell you, when I first saw the proposed, the, the, the discussions about the ordinance, and I didn't see twin home, and I saw the term town home, I started getting concerned with, with some of the town home complexes that we see running up and down Redwood Road, and that's, those are the ones that I had a concern with. To me, like I said before, a few twin homes, um, a, a few extra twin homes in the city where they'll, they'll tend to be owner occupied, and even if they're, even if they end up becoming a rental later on, uh, we're, we're talking more of a, like, it's a separate piece of property, almost a single-family home with a common, common wall. I, I don't have any fundamental problems with that, and I can see where we're correcting this, so.
Which would require two loans, right, when you're saying owner occupied, split down the middle, so you're not lugging in one half and renting out the other? Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. Um, I just had a question for, um, Larry. Um, we do have some homes on, uh, 3200 West, just, um, north of, um, Han Drive. There's zero lot line homes. Those are not twin homes. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're single-family homes that were just built with zero lot lines.
With a zero lot line. Okay, thank you.
And there's quite a few of those, uh, around West Jordan that were built, um, during that period of really high interest rate, you know, I think in the late 70s, early 80s, when 18 to 20% interest rate, and that's the only affordable home that could be built at that time, so.
Commissioner Green.
I'm going to move that based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend the 2009 city code regarding the cap and grade ordinance to add an exception to conditionally allow twin homes on certain vacant R2 zone properties with the following amendment, and that amendment would be that section F6 be added with a full sunset clause that removes this ordinance on a date sometime after February 28, 2020, as determined by city attorney's office.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, which brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. Any additional items to address?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, let's go with Larry, uh, Mr. Gardner, and we have Commissioner Quinney and Commissioner Green.
Because I know that you guys are going to want to leave, so. Um, the parks department is redoing the parks master plan. They've, we had the kickoff meeting yesterday, and it'll be about, from now until July, um, and what they're looking for is either one or two members of the planning commission to sit on an advisory committee for that planning process. And so what that will be is it'll be, uh, determining where we need parks, what parks areas that are already on the land use map should stay, what should, uh, be taken out, uh, what type of amenities, what should be in the parks, particularly two of the, the larger parks, they'll be focusing on the uses there, uh, Veterans Park and Rawan Wood, but there'll be other, uh, areas of parks. So it'll be a really good exercise if anyone's interested, and I think that, uh, any member of the planning commission will have some really good, uh, expertise and input. Now, it's a time commitment. Most of the meetings will be, uh, I think, I think you said late afternoon, uh, but there'd probably only be about three advisory meetings at the most, and they're hoping to wrap the whole, have the full park master plan update to you by July or August, and so. Is there anyone that's interested in doing that?
So we don't know an exact day?
Not yet.
Late afternoon, around 5:30-ish same time.
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you, and so.
Okay, thank you. So let's see, we have Commissioners Luthy and Hanson have expressed interest. Would anyone else like to share?
Back up.
We've got a backup by Commissioner Quinney.
Yeah, and certainly I would, um, what I'm going to strive to do is keep the commission updated as the process goes along, and these two could also fill you in on, and so you can have your full input on it, because you are residents and the planners of the city. And so I think this is a really good opportunity to, to maybe adjust some things, you know, and there's a little bit concerned at the kickoff meeting because they, they tend to focus, many people in the room tend to focus on the maintenance, well, we can't maintain this, we can't maintain that, where I really don't think that that's a good planning, way to think planning look at, because if you just look at something you can maintain, pretty soon you don't have anything decent, and you don't have anything you want to maintain is the issue. And so, um, what I'm trying to steer, you know, from my perspective is that we need to look at this as a, uh, one-year to 30-year timeframe on the things we want in the parks, and that all has to be built next year, but I think, so, great, I'm glad that you've, uh, volunteered. That'll be, I think it'll be really worth one. What?
I don't have surgery.
Well, that'll, that'll be your, that'll be what you lead to the city.
Would this be something?
We can have the Judy Hanson Memorial Park somewhere.
No, don't.
Is this something that we should have a motion on to officially appoint two members?
I don't need that. Do you? What, oh, that's Duncan.
I, I think it's good. It just creates a record where it's in the minutes, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Quinney or Commissioner Green, did you have anything that you wanted to say regarding this item?
No, but I would make the motion if you want me to.
Okay, please.
I, I move that we appoint Commissioners Hanson and Luthy to the Parks Planning Advisory Committee.
And let's see, we have a motion by Commissioner Quinney, a second by Commissioner Hatch, and any discussion? Uh, might I add, Commissioner Quinney, to it that you would be a backup?
Yeah, if I'm needed.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Hatch?
I'm sorry.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
For the amended motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thanks for taking on an additional responsibility and opportunity to help the vision of West Jordan. And I bet you have 30 years. I'll, I'll give you 30.
Don't say that.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Quinney.
Yeah, I just had one other quick question. Last year, and I think at least the year before that, Scott came down and gave us, uh, his review of the, the cap and grade, since we talked about that tonight, and I noticed that he just did his presentation to city council. Um, can we get our, our, our visit from Scott? Can he come down and visit with us for a little bit about that?
I will make that.
Or you can present it, I'm sure.
Either one, either Scott will come down from the Ivory Tower, or I will.
Yeah, if Scott would be willing to just stand, that would be great to have him at the base with a presence.
Thank you. And Commissioner Green.
If, if, there's a couple of new commissioners, but, uh, last, the last joint meeting with us and the city council, we had talked about the potential of redo, redoing the PC and P, and PD zones, and we were looking for, I was going to head that up, but we needed another, at least one person from the planning commission. Is, is there anybody that wants to volunteer for that? No?
I'd volunteer.
Just, it's probably like one, one or two meetings.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, and we'll set up the meeting so they're convenient. And then, Mr. Gardner, if you can get with the city council to see if anybody wants to, wants to sit on that. I know we talked about, well, some, a couple, one or two from them, if they want to sit on it. If staff wants to, just, if you can get me some names, and then I'll send out an invite, and we'll meet once or twice to get the vision of what we need to do, and then probably do rest by email.
Yeah, we'll pass that to Scott, and he can talk to David Burkey about it and see how it works.
Does that need a motion?
No.
Okay. We know that Commissioner Hatch will work with Commissioner Green on that advisory committee. Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn?
With approval to adjourn.
Yeah, you, 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 no, okay, great. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks.